Recording in progress.
Call to order, the regular meeting of the Real Deal City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garren's here. Number ten, Carter, here. Councilmember Orr.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall.
Uh, excuse me. Please stand for the further reading. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph and Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is in our urgency nature required immediate action. Please leave comments to three minutes. Bitch, got anything?
No. Can I try to pressure?
Okay, well, yeah, that's rude. Say that every day. Any emails here?
No.
We'll close public presentations and move to the consent calendar. Is there any item that a council member wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Anything? Any emails? Any hand raised?
Nope.
Yeah. Then I will call for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So.
So, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, please. Vote. Motion carries for zero. Staff, communications, city manager, page thirty-three in our packets.
Thank you, Mayor Garren, and members of the council. Staff to attend a meeting of a regional group that's working on a framework to distribute new economic development and post-COVID-19 recovery funds based on region. So, our region would be Lake Mendocino, Humboldt, and Delaware Counties. And then there's the potential of approximately half a billion dollars being distributed amongst the different regions for area projects. So, we're continuing to watch that. And I think the mayor's probably going to be participating in one of the committee groups there, making sure that there's an equitable distribution of funding for that. We have continued our conversations with various elected officials regarding earthquake and long-term recovery efforts. And later, I have a short presentation on 2017 storm damage-related activity. And that is pretty much it for the time being. Obviously, we have Wildwood Days coming up, which is exciting. And thank you to councilmember Carter and councilmember Woodall for the community cleanup day, helping to organize that and push that forward. So, I think that was pretty successful. Other than that, the report is attached to your agenda, and staff is happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mayor Ten. No question. Thank you, councilmember Orr.
No question.
Councilmember Wilson.
No.
No question.
Bitch, got anything?
No.
Any hand raised or email? Okay, then we will close that. Move on to special call items. Item one, receive staff update on Monument Road slip-out project, page thirty-nine in our packets.
Thank you, Mayor Garren, and members of the council. So, this is just the short verbal presentation. I was worried it would be a little bit more just full of disappointing and frustrating news, but we do have some late developments in this particular saga. As the council will recall, back in two thousand seventeen, we had the winter storms, which were effectively declared disaster. We had the Monument Road slip-out. And it's been a long slog of a process over the ensuing years to get a project approved by FEMA that would ultimately solve the situation on that particular section of Monument Road. The county is the lead on this particular project. And we have had to enlist the support of Congressman Huffman, who we met with a few months ago personally, and kind of brought this into focus for him. And then we've had a lot of support for this staff member, John Driscoll, in advocating to kind of get FEMA to move this particular project forward. I briefed the council in the past that, you know, we were concerned about financial exposure to the city in that what FEMA essentially did is they capped the repair rather arbitrarily and then not very fairly at a specific cost. And so, this was put out to bid. The bids came back actually pretty favorable. But then there is a final approval process through FEMA that should only take, you know, a matter of a couple of weeks to do. We were running on the end of really a sixty-day period for FEMA to approve it, with the contractor, you know, obviously wanting to conduct work before the winter on repairing that area. And then, in the context of inflation putting pressure on the contractor, the project looked like it was in jeopardy to get constructed at all, and that there might have to be another bid, in which case the cost would most likely escalate or not de-escalate. So, we did get some recent information that the congressman was successful in getting FEMA to do the approval. At this point, the county is going to be meeting with the contractor and doing the final environmental approval through FEMA, which should take a very long amount of time, apparently. And then we'll see where the contractor's at in terms of getting this work done before the rainy wet season. But at this point, it's about a bit of a dippy, just because there has been this kind of delay in the approval process. So, that's just the update. Again, I was a little bit concerned that we, that the project would have to be put back out to bid. So, that's good news. And that's really just the gist of the report.
Thank you. Want to go again? No questions. Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
No question.
Councilmember Orr?
No question.
I have no questions. Thank you for all your work on it. City manager, I know you've been constant in the staff. You've been on screen constantly on with Congressman Huffman and John Driscoll, and we appreciate everything you've done. Are there any questions? Any hand raised? Any emails? Okay, then I think that is, you just need a nut, they write the group, not action.
All right.
We will move on to item number two, authorize mayor to sign correspondence to Governor Newsom related to California Department of General Services' purpose of real property in the city of Rio de. Page forty in our package. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garren, and members of the council. So, we're going to bring this up briefly at our last meeting to kind of provide us an overview of the situation. And I will briefly cover that again. We are hopefully on, or potentially on pace for a record-short meeting. But basically, the California Department of General Services has purchased a parcel, an eighteen-acre parcel formerly known as the Todd Property, basically directly in the center of Rio de, on the corner of Wildwood Avenue, Davis Street, and US 101. So, you know, this is really a key parcel that the city's identified over the years in terms of expanding housing and commercial development opportunity, job creation activities, visitor-serving facilities, that sort of thing. In this, and I trust that the councils have adequate time to read the letter, and so I'm not going to go into super detail on each of the points. And certainly, the council has some edits or changes or suggested additions or anything like that. We're happy to do that. The mayor did, I talked to the mayor earlier today, and she did have a recommended edition to the letter. And so, I handed that out. And the addition basically kind of reiterates, or not reiterates, but touched it back on prior meetings that we've had, the mayors had with the governor's office back in 2019, along with other mayors and representatives from the Department of Housing and Community Development discussing housing, which the governor first became governor. His main motive was housing. His main objective was housing. And so, you know, what the mayor was able to convey to the governor at that point in time was the, you know, importance of working together in partnership on these projects, and that Rio de wanted to be a part of the solution with that. So, we just added that as a potential addition. Happy to try to add anything else or subtract if the council so desires. But otherwise, I would leave it to the council members to provide it. But maybe you can figure out the final draft a little later.
Thank you, city manager. Councilmember Wilson?
I mean, what are we actually going to talk with this? Because we're just asking and saying for intervention. We don't want to get a problem. If Cal Fire says that the eighteen acres over a hundred years, then they're not going to use that now. But a hundred years is a long time in so this.
Yeah, I think, you know, the cheapest and easiest solution for everybody is that, you know, the political pressure is applied to move towards the city's preferred solution, which is not in any way adverse to Cal Fire, but is saying that there's a way that this large amount of land that could be split into three purposes. And that, really, at this point, this would be kind of the touchstone in the beginning of that, hopefully, of a conversation as to whether the governor's office would be able to make that happen. All right.
Councilmember Orr? Mayor Ten?
I liked the letter. I don't think you should subtract anything. It was hard for me to not, you know, make it way more harshly phrased. But no, no, you did a really nice job of walking that line. But I think that we've made some excellent points. And every bullet point I read, I'm like, yeah. So, no, I think it's right. Don't change it.
That's it. And I appreciate the addition. And that's going to be, any, Rich, yeah, anything? Yeah, anything you have raised? Any emails?
No.
Then I think I'll call for a motion.
Just before you call for the motion, just for the record, in case anybody's watching it at home, or, you know, watching the video later on down the road, you know, I think I speak for the council when I say that there is, you know, you know, open and potentially an enthusiastic arms to Cal Fire coming to Rio de. And so, the letter should not be in any way construed as being anti-Cal Fire as an agency or their mission or anything even remotely like that. It is about just the efficient use of the land to serve multiple purposes, not just one very important one. So, I just wanted to, you know, make sure that that's on the record for anybody, you know, watching.
Absolutely, absolutely. Because that is absolutely a true statement that there's more than one way to do this, not just for one person. So, I think we can all benefit. You repeatedly said, you know, this, you've developed, or the staff has developed, a win-win-win situation. And if they can look at that, and if the governor can help us with that, that would be really, really amazing and super helpful to the economic development for the city, for the benefit of the city. So, I appreciate the letter. So, now I will call for a motion.
I will make the motion to accept this letter.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Motion carries for zero. I would go for council reports and communications. Councilmember Orr?
Went to HCO, I think, so, to play a radio. Talked a lot about the housing problems in the surrounding areas and the requirement to reach those housing levels. I talked a lot about the housing projects up near Arcata, the low to medium income housing projects they're looking at and pushing those forward. I went over a lot of projects that are finishing, the two ninety-nine project over there, and they're on ramp, they're going to start working on from the two ninety-nine to the one-on-one, that kind of like danger area there. And then the big thing was, like us with the solar project we talked about, expressing or sending a letter of concern to the wind farm they're looking at about whether it will benefit the local area of oil profits. They'll just go to some corporation somewhere else and protecting the waterways there as well. So, other than that, it was.
Which, what do you call it, the offshore?
The offshore wind farm. Was it the offshore wind-heavy lift, multi-purged marine terminal project, and the Humboldt Bay offshore area?
Or, can, can we, or?
Not a lot. I just, there is an HWM meeting. I got a message today that they normally skip the one in August, but because last one, there was a gag, they're going to do one in August that they haven't quite, but they were supposed to be today. I think one of the, sorry, I don't know.
And Mayor Ten?
Okay. Well, as the city manager mentioned, we did have a volunteer cleanup day this past Saturday. I thought that it went really well. We had good community engagement. When kids show up, adults, I mean, basically all ages, it was really nice. We did pick up a good amount of trash. Found one kitten that we were able to get to the shelter through the Rio de Police Department. So, that is lovely also. We named him Garbage. Let's see. I have a chamber meeting this coming Friday that I think will just be all Wildwood Days. I also went to a redact meeting, not a ton to report there, except that I did just push Wildwood Days on all of them, which leads me to, of course, Wildwood Days this weekend. So, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday is a really big, important deal. I think it is every year, and I think it is this year in particular. The last time the whole town got together at the fire hall, it was not under wonderful circumstances. And this is a chance that we have to really come out for a fun celebratory thing. And I hope to see everybody there. And I've been just pushing this on, everybody who's behind me in the line of Safeway or whatever, for months, people ask me, how do we help Rio de? How do we help Rio de? And my answer is, come down here, be part of our community, come cheer for us, come buy a waffle, come down here and visit us and help us celebrate with this. So, I'm all dressed up, all ready, all ready to go. Wildwood Days. That's it.
That's it. Nice. Okay. And I have an HTA meeting tomorrow morning. And on the eighteenth, there is Cal Cities League Division meeting. And it's being held in Fortuna. So, everyone feel free to, you know, come hang out, you know, hang out and network with the Cal Cities people.
That's a good speaker this time.
Yeah.
It's the president, right?
Right. The president of the league will be, will be our. So President of the League will be, um, will be, uh, our keynote speaker for, uh, the, the meeting this time, so that should be very interesting. Um, I also want to push Wildwood Days, um, anyone who's listening, as the mayor Pro Tim said, everyone is constantly since December said, what can they do? And this is, this is your opportunity to come and do it, please come, um, please come celebrate, there's barbecue on, um, barbecue on Thursday, coming, you're getting to have ribs, it should be good. There's thirteen, the seven.
Two oh one, Sunday.
Yes, there's still, there's a barbecue on Thursday, that's, um, uh, uh, contest, and then on Fri- Saturday, there's another, another meal, and I can't remember, but it's in the barbecue range, and then Sunday, there's the fireman's barbecue, um, at noon.
Well, whatever became last, in the last meeting we talked about on, uh, honoring the.
I was just going to get to that.
Okay.
So, and I hope, that was my next thing, is I hope the council will show up around twelve-thirty, we're going to honor the three young men, um, um, at the fire, just before the auction on Sunday afternoon, the auction's at one, and they will, um, do the presentation at, uh, between twelve-thirty and, and twelve-forty-five, so. And so, um, we look forward to it, we're excited about it, but I don't want anyone to lose bets on how quickly this meeting can get over, so, hey! I'm calling for a adjournment. Is there a motion? Motion? Now a motion, is there a second? Alright, motion and second, getting adjourned.
Well, I'm going to be one minute or a second.
Very good.
Oh, I'm happy to come each year. Yeah, yeah, I think, I think, yeah, I hope, I hope there's someone, but, yeah.
Yeah.